Seventeenth Board Meeting. Will everyone please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate, empower, and inspire excellence. We do have a registration for anyone who would like to address the Board on any of the actionable items on our agenda. There are forms over here. They're the attorney that you can fill out and return to the Board table at the appropriate time before we take action. There's also public comments available at the conclusion of the meeting for any topic that anyone would like to address with the Board. We welcome you to come up. The same process, just fill out the form and return it to the Board table, and we'd be happy to bring you up. All Board members were provided background information in preparation for tonight's meeting. And our meeting is being livestreamed, so we welcome those who are joining us remotely. And certainly, we are happy to be here at Crispin School. Mr. Huffer, thank you for hosting us this evening. And it's always great to, to work for us to get out and come into the buildings and be able to hold our meetings like this. Again, we appreciate the time and effort to host us here this evening. So we'll begin with our student and staff presentation, the No Place for Hate Initiative. So we have members of that steering committee here, if you would please.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Allenens, we have the privilege of bringing to you an update of our No Place for Hate Initiative. Just to give you a little bit of background information, we started back in the 2023-24 school year, using our Panorama survey data to establish two goals. The first being in the student survey category of school belonging, we show an increase of four percent at elementary level, five percent at secondary level by January of 2025. And then also on that student survey category of school climate, we wanted to show an increase of five percent at both the elementary and secondary level by January of 2025. And at that time, we also started the various action steps of that initiative, which included establishing our critical values of responsibility, fairness, honesty, respect, and compassion. We established the No Place for Hate pledge, which our Board took the lead on, as you recall, signing that board last fall, 2023, and then followed in suit by each of our buildings. We also began initiating our monthly observances and cultural celebrations. And then we also developed a plan of using our case studies for diversity and social justice education on a monthly basis. So that was our plan. And then I am very pleased to report to you that as far as January 2025 Panorama survey data, since 2023 in the area of school belonging, our elementary schools showed an increase of three percent, which is just shy of our goal. Our secondary schools showed an increase of six percent, which is just above our goal. Since 2023 in the areas of school climate, elementary showed an increase of six percent, and secondary showed an increase of, elementary showed an increase of three percent, and secondary showed an increase of six percent. So we were very, very pleased with the results of our survey data this past January. So to give you more of an idea of what that survey data looks like, Sarah Peer is going to walk you through some of those data points.
Yep, so looking here, you can see our student survey is broken into five topics. And at the elementary level, we saw growth just since last year to this year in four of those five topics. In the area of school belonging, we are ranked nationally in the 60th to 79th percentile. And that actually went up a level since last year, too. So the increase was one percent since last year, but like Linda mentioned, we had increased three percent overall at the elementary level. At the secondary level, those same five topics, we can see the percent favorable responses of students. So we also see larger increases since last year in all of those topics. So those are the increases we have seen since last year. And again, overall, in school climate, we saw an increase by six percent since 2023 and school belonging by six percent. So we're seeing a lot of really great growth across the board at both elementary and secondary levels. Also, I wanted to point out, our school belonging for secondary, that thirty percent favorable response, that is the highest that that topic has received since we started the Panorama survey. So our committee looks at this raw data. We've developed our plans, but we also like to just look at the data in multiple ways to see what kinds of trends that we're finding. So one thing that we've looked at is comparing the student data to the teacher data in school climate. And this helps us look for ways that we can continue to raise that school climate in both areas. And we have, you know, looking at this data the last couple of years, we have seen some trends that make us believe that the teacher data definitely impacts the student data. So we want to make sure that the teachers are feeling that positive school climate just as much as our students. The other thing that we're looking at is thinking about how school engagement, which is another topic of the survey, how does school engagement relate to school belonging and school climate? So looking at this graph, we can hopefully see that if we can just raise that school engagement a little bit, it could hopefully push the school belonging and school climate up further. And this, looking at these kinds of things will help us continue our No Place for Hate initiative and thinking about what kinds of things do we need to put in place, what kinds of activities do we need to put in place to continue this momentum? And then one other area that we also look at is how does this relate to our achievement data? So one thing that we looked at, this is from last year's winter NWEA data. We looked at the achievement of students, and that is those achievement meaning students who were at the sixty-first percentile or higher on their reading and math. And we compared how the percentage of students who were at that percentile with their belonging scores, just to see how they relate. So again, the idea is we really believe that that sense of belonging is going to impact achievement. So as we continue to raise that level of belonging, we're going to see the impact on achievement as well. Okay, so I'm going to let Linda talk a little bit more about this.
So as far as those actual action steps, this is a picture of what our monthly activity board looks like. Last year, it started with just the critical values. We had nine different grids, nine different activities that teachers could use from. Well, this year, we decided to expand it just a little bit. So we now have three categories, one for our critical values, but one is specific to building a sense of belonging. And then the third has the cultural observances and celebrations. And then we also include links to music because we think that's another important way to connect with our students and connect with those cultural celebrations and the critical values. And then we also have a link to the case study for each month. And then here we have just a few pictures of how some of our buildings are using those critical values. The picture on the left, that's a student at Fagley as they were creating posters, how they can demonstrate honesty. The picture on the upper right is from our Alesworth students who were showing responsibility, removing stuff marks and helping to clean up a little bit in the lunchroom, teaching some basic responsibility schools. And the picture at the bottom, this is from an activity at Portage High School, where the students were creating some thank you cards for our Portage Police and Fire Department. Here on the left, we have the Apec group at Kyle Elementary who created a quilt featuring resilience. So that was another great, different way to kind of showcase some of those critical values. And on the right, we have the Willow Creek students. They were featuring their exceptional behavior, so that also showing some responsibility.
So we've continued our pledge this year as well. And introducing that, we wanted to, you know, change it up a little bit this year. So we actually have our high school leadership team. They arranged to visit each of our elementary schools. So the high school students presented the No Place for Hate pledge, got the elementary students excited about that with various activities, and then the students went back to their classrooms and signed the pledge with them. And then these are just some of the, in the upper right-hand corner, those are students at Fagley taking the pledge. They took the pledge during an assembly. And then we also had schools display those No Place for Hate pledge cards in multiple ways, just to make it visually appealing, to let people know when they came in to visit right away that that school was a No Place for Hate area.
Also, we wanted to show you some of the cultural observations that were going on at the building. So in the upper left-hand corner, that is from Sailor Elementary. They had the students create an afrenda as part of their Dia de los Muertos celebration back in October. The middle picture in the upper row, that's from South Haven Elementary. And they were doing a book study on Esperanza Rising. That was for their Hispanic Heritage Month. The next three pictures are actually all from Fagley. The one on the upper right shows where they were collaborating with our Food Services Department. They prepared a Native American rice dish back in November. So that was kind of a neat way for the kids to kind of taste a little bit of the culture of our Native Americans. And then they were doing some posters of the different holidays and different, from different cultures during the month of December. And then the picture down at the bottom is also at Fagley where they brought in a dance troupe from Arizona that displayed some of their cultural dances as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. And then coming soon, we have our second annual BTS Cultural Fair, coming up Thursday, April 24th, from 5:00 to 6:30 at the Portage High School Fieldhouse. We unfortunately invite you all to attend. We have some pictures here from what had happened last year. We had several performances, we had ballet, meh- Poplorko, thank you. Had done some performances as well as the Portage Township Schools' SEPA's team. We had some food trucks there and then some other activities for our families and some exhibitions that were created, all celebrating various cultures of our BTS family. So we met our goals from the, from 2023, so what do we need to do next? Well, we need to set some new goals, set some new targets. So we have begun the process of continuing to analyze our data and talk about what's been most about, most effective and decide what goals do we want to set for the future, what things do we need to tweak or improve. We're getting some more feedback on the No Place for Hate initiative so that we can determine what activities we want to include. And one of the most exciting things, too, is getting to work with the Chamber of Commerce. As we heard just a couple of minutes ago, how they are taking the No Place for Hate pledge out into the community with those posters and the window decals. So we are excited to be able to partner with them on that. So that is all we have for you, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Well, great, great program. I mean, and you're seeing the results, which is, I'm sure it's rewarding for all of you. And so my only question is, and you kind of answered a little bit because you got the chamber. How do you, you know, after time, how do you keep it fresh? How do you, because, you know, over time, people start just not paying attention as much anymore. So what are some of the things you're going to do to keep it, keep it fresh?
We actually were having some of those conversations, you know? How can we expand it into the community? Some other organizations within the community that want to partner with us. I mean, Urban League had some ideas. There was a symposium, several of our team members attended last earlier this month. And so there was professional development opportunities that they would like to partner with us. So lots more to come.
Good, good. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Please.
In terms of the survey, and I noticed that the high school students, you know, in the area of sense of belonging, and you mentioned, you know, when in high school you should be-
Are you having some dialogue with them or can you, to find out, like, what are the reasons that they are feeling the way they are? Or the perception is, is the way it is?
That's a great question. Yes, we do have members of our team that work, that meet with that student committee. I personally don't have those answers, but we can get back to you on that.
And I would think over time, as a program goes, the kids who are in elementary and middle school who are buying in on it as you roll each year, right? And then they become, could get into the middle schools and the high schools will carry that on. You'll probably see those numbers go up a little more dramatically than some of those who have already been kind of established in there and maybe a little more cynical over time, right?
And I can't remember when that survey was taken or was, you know, was that in January? Did you say January?
Yes, that was just in January.
I'm wondering if it was in April, it would be different with all the sunshine and-
Excellent. I'm glad you brought that up because we actually did use to give it in April. But if you think about what else is happening in April, we have a lot of testing going on, and that's a pretty stressful time for-
It is very stressful for everyone.
Correct, correct. So that's why we made a conscious effort to move it up to January, is there wasn't quite as much testing going on.
That makes sense. Thank you.
There have been some really positive discussions. We've talked as a committee about how there is such a strong correlation with our students who have their elementary teacher for a strong majority of the day. And maybe how does that impact their greater sense of belonging? But then looking at that growth at the secondary level and the six percent of how they, although it's not, you know, where we would like it to be, there have been a lot of initiatives that they've put in place. For instance, at the high school, they now have, and forgive me, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it's called arc time. And this is the second year they're doing it. It meets two purposes. Number one, it's a remediation purpose because we did a study together in professional development with our leadership team virtually about the importance of finding time within the school day to do that remediation. So they have switched their homeroom to a third period. And now what happens is we have a scheduler that your teacher can schedule you to come in to do a makeup assignment or something. And then the kids can also schedule themselves to go to their different teachers, and then it pops up in their attendance. So there are opportunities now built into the day to, whether it be to reconnect because I'm struggling with a topic, or maybe I'm going down to meet with my counselor and a small group of friends that are having a difficult situation we're dealing with. So those things, I think, are also really powerful. And then the high school, I, just even recently, they just did a convocation with a speaker who used to play, I believe it was for the Colts, and it was very powerful. And they followed up with that, and they had numerous students who then, well over a hundred students, who wanted to speak individually with a counselor after hearing the talk. So I think there's a lot of positive. We have even tried to help them to see, look, it's not where you want it, but look, it's trending in the right direction, and we have to be mindful that, I've said this to the group myself, sometimes we, an individual that we like to follow on our committee, it's Tara Brown, and she was a secondary teacher in an urban district and came from like a very rural district, a rural upbringing in Kentucky. And she was very effective and impactful. And she said, when an administrator walks into your room and says that we should be teaching bell to bell, that's not the answer. The answer is connecting with students, bell to bell. So even in our own minds, trying to change what that, the word choices that we're using, I think will in the long run help out. And the kids on the committee, I'm also not a member of the committee that works specifically with those student ambassadors for No Place for Hate, but they really take that very seriously. And as kids are coming up through that, and we, you know, we have graduates and then new kids coming on, it's been impactful.
Great. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Well, congratulations. I mean, you guys are working hard and you're seeing, you're seeing good results. And just keep up the good work. We really appreciate it. That's all, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, next up, we've got the presentation of ELA curriculum adoption for the elementary and middle schools. Dr. Stevens.
Again, thank you for having us. What I want to do is really just kind of tee it up for a couple of our elementary principals who are going to give you some background information on the adoption process. I will tell you that in your agenda, you have the middle school presentation. Unfortunately, both of our middle school principals have had some things pull them away until they won't be here tonight. But what you hear from our elementary people is kind of mirrored through our middle school as well. I just want to say that this is one of the more momentous occasions for all of Portage because the adoption of English Language Arts materials is very important for the next six years. And that becomes something that we all need to really invest in, and they did. I just want to thank them for leading the process. The team that was part of this selection and recommendation to you represents all schools, all grade levels, K to eight. And it is, I will just let you know, since we won't hear from the middle school, that it's a, it's serendipitous, but it happened to work out that both groups, elementary and the middle school, chose a product from the same group, the SAVIS group. And because of that, a lot of the instructional vocabulary and training will translate K to eight, which really helps in terms of, Dr. Allen has just mentioned, the vocabulary that we use. When that can be the thing that is not a hindrance to the children's learning, that becomes a better opportunity. So it worked out that way. We, they weren't directed to do that, but it did work that way. So the middle school is a program called My Perspectives. And I'll let these guys kind of tell you a little bit about the elementary portion of that and so how that all works together. So two of our principals stepped up and volunteered to lead this, which, what has been a two-year, a little over two-year process because we did do some piloting at the elementary as well. And so they, they really spearheaded that, and that is Scott Huffer, who's our host here tonight, and then John Schlobowski, who's currently our principal at Alesworth Elementary. So I'll let those guys bring the, you guys, the full presentation.
And it's not to say the other principals wouldn't have done this if you asked them.
Well, welcome to Christmas this evening. My name is Scott Huffer. I'm the principal here at Crispin. I've had the privilege to be here for about fifteen years and really have enjoyed that opportunity. Tonight, we have a second purpose, and that is to share our elementary ELA adoption process with you. And so you're going to hear us talk not just about what we selected, but kind of how we got there, if that makes sense. I have had the privilege of working with John Schlobowski from Alesworth, and we began that process together for us this past August.
All right, so we began several years ago, the HRS High Reliability Schools Initiative here in Portage Township Schools. And the first three levels are Level One, Safe and Collaborative Culture, which we've worked on all throughout Portage Township Schools. Level Two, Effective Teaching in Every Classroom. And what we have done here with this ELA adoption is guaranteed and viable curriculum. We are making sure that every student in every school, in every classroom throughout Portage Township Schools has access to the same ELA curriculum with the same rigor and the same resources. So that's what we're going through right here, and that's how it is aligned. So to tell you about how the process started, it began in March of 2024. The District ELA Adoption Committee was formed. Back then, the Jones Principal, Jenna Klein, and then the Alesworth Principal, Taria Taylor, were the head of this committee, and they met with this team. So this team, they asked four questions. What do we want in a reading series? What do we want to see in instruction in every lesson? Instruction in every unit? And how do we plan to get input from the teachers? So in April of 2024, the High Quality Instructional Material Showcase came at Portage High School, and the District ELA Adoption Committee decided to, they found the top three choices among the state-approved curricular materials. And then in August and September of 2024, the reading pilots began. So we had our top three choices, and each of the three choices that we had, one was Open Court, then we had Wonders, and then we have SAVIS, My View, which is the one we're ending up to go with. We had, we were able to, to use them at three different elementary buildings with, in several different classrooms so that we could see and talk about which one would be the best for us. And then in December for 2024 through February of 2025, so up to the present, we've met with the District ELA Adoption Committee several times at Alesworth Elementary School. And we sought, we heard presentations from each of the three, each of the three companies. And the committee was able to have discussions, ask questions, and we got feedback from all the teachers who were piloting throughout the district regarding each of these companies so that our district committee would be able to make a sound decision. We also sought feedback from every single elementary teacher, all throughout the district as well.
John and I had the privilege of walking into a situation where there was already an incredible team in place. And we don't take that for granted. This team consisted of K to five teachers. It consisted of teachers from all eight buildings. There were special education teachers, Title I teachers, and a literacy coach. The one thing that we did adjust was we did add a couple of teachers to this team so that every pilot was represented. As he mentioned, we did three pilots, and so we wanted to make sure that there was somebody who was actually involved in that piloting process of those materials on this team as well. So within that team, we had those three pilots represented as well. From the start, they were definitely committed to giving their very best and really focusing on what was going to be best for all of our students and staff in Portage. Three of those members are here tonight. Thank you, Carrie Towns and Beth, for coming today. We appreciate it.
So when we did the pilots, we had them at three different schools. And we made sure that at each of the three schools, we had primary representation, so grades K through two, and then we had intermediate representation in grades three through five. So at Alesworth Elementary School, we piloted My View, SAVIS, and we had seven different teachers running My View. We had a kindergarten teacher in first grade and in fourth grade with seven, or seven different teachers. Crispin piloted Open Court by McGraw-Hill. We had five teachers throughout first grade and third grade. And in South Haven, they piloted Wonders with McGraw-Hill. They had six teachers in kindergarten, second grade, and fifth grade. On January fifteenth and sixteenth, we had the three different companies come to Alesworth Elementary School and present, do their presentations to our committee, and the committee was- School and present, do their presentations to our committee and the committee was able to make informed decisions and ask questions and then really continue the discussion from there, narrowing our choices and talking about which would be the best in Portage Township Schools.
All three pilots would be considered a positive. And what I mean by that is we actually surveyed every one of those pilot teachers. Seventeen of the eighteen pilot teachers said either, we should definitely consider this, it's going to be our best option, or choice B was, I think this should continue in the process because it's a really strong program. Only one out of eighteen of the teachers that looked at those three programs said, I think we can do better. That was a really strong sign to us that no matter which way we went, it was going to be an improvement from where we were at. We're thankful for that. I am going to read that first bullet item to you because I think it's really important, what John and I tried to focus on. We weren't a part of that first meeting back in March of 2024, but it's been the desire of that committee from that very time to focus on teacher input. One of their original questions was, how do we plan to get input from teachers? And we've done this through piloting resources with eighteen teachers, having fourteen teachers serve on the committee, and inviting every K to five teacher, special ed teacher, and Title I teacher to be involved in the process. Over 125 teachers came to professional development for about an hour and a half where they were able to dig into both physical resources and the electronic resources and collaborate with their grade level colleagues. So we're really proud of some of those steps that were taken to make sure that teachers were heard, they were part of the process, they had, were able to give feedback and also asked really strong questions of us.
So in the end, based on input from over 125 teachers and based on the discussions that we had with this committee, we were able to come to a consensus. And I mean consensus, not a vote. It wasn't just a simple, okay, this many people want this program, this many people want the other. We got the consensus from the entire committee based on all that feedback that My View Savis would be the best option for Portage Township Schools. And the main reasons for that are because of its comprehensive ELA curriculum. It is one of the five approved by the state of Indiana and it's the best of the three programs Portage Township School Elementary Teacher chose to pilot. Once we got down to analyzing all the feedback and all the discussions in those curriculum meetings with, with the committee, it really, it really wasn't close. So it has consumable student editions that allows for annotating the text and including instructional anchor charts, engaging materials for our students, and they are in full color. That consumable edition is really a valuable tool for the teachers and the kids. You know, I remember when I was a kid and a lot of the programs that we have for our students and previously have been the hardcover textbook that you collect at the beginning or at the end of every year, you pass out at the beginning of the next. For kids to each have their own copy of everything that includes all the text, all the pages and all the practice that goes with it, that's huge. So that they have that, they're able to annotate, and that's something that they're required to do on the state mandated exams like I read and I learn as well. So it aligns with the assessments better. Online presentation mode, user-friendly for teachers, excellent instructional slides and strong student platform, aligned instructional assessments can be modified if necessary. The data is provided and it can be analyzed to drive and modify instructional practice. So after kids take an assessment, the data is then, and the scores and the data is sent right to the teachers so we can see where the deficiencies are, what students still need more practice, what students are ready for enrichment. It's all right there. And there are numerous supplemental materials for remediation, enrichment, and English language learners as well. And being a proud Portage Township Schools parent as well, I have two kids in the district, I would, I would, from the parent perspective, recommend this. I would be really happy with my kids having this, this reading program moving forward as well.
In addition to those reasons for the curriculum, there are a couple of other things that just come along with it. One was, among our top two choices, My View by Savis was significantly less expensive than the other curriculum. And so we certainly understand the importance of finances too. And so the fact that it was our first choice and was less expensive was a bonus. Second, Dr. Stevens already mentioned, it's the recommendation of middle school to be with that same company, Savis. So there's certainly a benefit for our students in that, the fact that it did play out as an alignment. The one other thing that I would like to share, our process, as we've kind of laid it out, had a lot of steps and had a lot of teacher involvement throughout that process. Dr. Al, Dr. Allez and Dr. Stevens were extremely helpful. Every time we asked, hey, we need some release time, we need to try and do this with teachers. You know, we were creative in how we can make that happen, but we wanted to make sure that there was, as it was mentioned earlier, the importance of this adoption is critical. It's reading and it's K to five. It's critical. And so every time we said we'd like to do this, the answer was, yes, let's make that happen. And so we're certainly appreciative for that in the process. That's really the extent of what our presentation has for you. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have, or at least try to answer any questions that you may have related to the ELA adoption process for elementary or the curriculum materials that are being recommended.
What a great process. Congratulations. I mean, it sounds like it was a ton of work on everybody's part and I just love the fact that there were so many teachers involved because, you know, it's something that we've heard in the past is, oh my God, the curriculum just gets driven down to us, we don't like it, that you had the teachers involved. I think it's critically important and, and again, kudos to the administration for allowing that to happen, but this is great. I mean, you guys, the enthusiasm that we can hear from your voices as you talk about it, I agree, it seems like it makes an awful lot of sense to be aligned with the, with the middle schools as well and just, we really appreciate all the effort and the hard work that everybody put in on it. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Questions? Comments? You always have a question, which I look into.
So, yeah, I do. He must, so what kind of ongoing support will you be getting from this company?
Professional development. They are committed to that, to training all of our teachers on how to use the product. And they are also, the company has been extremely supportive. Since I piloted, my teachers piloted at Aylesworth, anytime that they had a question, the company was right there. They just, they didn't have to come to me and me communicate with the company. They communicated with the company. They got extra, they got extra supplies when they needed it if they had a question about how something was used. And the company has pledged to do that for the school system moving forward as well. And based on what I've seen, I have a reason to believe that they will.
Have we worked with Savis before?
This is our second adoption with Savis. We had a Savis adoption for the previous six years in middle school. They, and as you can see, they've selected it again. But they say exactly what John shared with the amount of support, the training and professional development, the ability to contact them and get any kinks worked out or clarity. It has, and when you talked about the presentation slides, that has been something our teachers really found valuable because the amount of time it takes to develop a lot of those things on their own time, to have such quality slides and other materials for them has been really beneficial.
One thing also, about 150 teachers have already had access to their, their online resources and their online materials, so they've been able to actually dig in to the extent they wanted to and see what the assessments look like or what the M L materials look like. Or, so if their passion was remediation, they've been able to kind of dig into that and see what that looked like. So we, we did receive a lot of feedback based on the homework they were able to do on their own.
And they, and it's not just a cookie cutter presentation of, the company has asked what, what our teachers need the most support with and what they, what they, what we think will be most beneficial to them. Based on the feedback we got from the teachers, they've been able to tailor that for us as well.
Just so you're aware of the general plan, obviously, we don't want to assume that you're going to approve things until you actually put your stamp to it. So tomorrow, pending your approval, tonight, we'll be making phone calls to this company, setting up those kinds of trainings. And then my goal is to have those begin before the end of this school year so that our teachers can start to really dig into the different materials and then also have some further work over the summer available to teachers if they are so inclined to come in and do those kinds of things so that they can best be ready to hit the ground running when we come back next school year so that people can feel very comfortable with the, with the different materials. Having been part of many, many adoptions over the course of my career, it's always, there's always something else that you find once you actually get it in your hands. And so I want to give them that opportunity before the kids are sitting in front of them to find those different little nuances because that will then help grow the whole system. Once I figure out something out and I use it in my classroom, of course, I'm going to share it with my colleagues and that just speeds the process of learning for all of our teachers too. So we want to get that started as soon as possible. Later on in the, in the agenda, we'll be asking for your approval of both the elementary and the middle. I just want to say, and this is a little bit of an editorial, but the cost of this is still very high and it just is. And in years past, that's been something that we've been able to go to our community and ask for their support of that through our book rental. That's not the case any longer and in many cases, this will not cover, the, the information or the monies that we get from the state will not cover the whole use of our curriculum across the board, not just the English, but across the whole gamut of things. And so this is an investment that we as a school corporation are making and you guys as a school board are, are signing us up for. So it's something that's very important to us. We want to make sure that what we do adopt, we use very effectively. So that's, that's something we kind of pledge to you and to our community that we don't take this lightly. This is something that we will, we will put our, our best effort forward on. And then also, I will just let you know that the high school is a whole another beast when it comes to adoption of, of language arts and the English because they have so many different individual courses. So they plan to be, have that all organized and presented to you in a very similar fashion in April so that we can then move forward with that kind of. And they've done a very similar thing. Now, obviously, more teachers are involved at the elementary level, teaching language arts. Middle school gets a little smaller. High school has different levels and so there are some teachers that only have ninth grade, some that only have eleventh grade, some that only have honors. So they all get those input from those levels too. They'll explain that to you in April and then bring you a whole list of different coursework that they would like to ask for that approval as well, as, as well as more of the resources that we pick individually at the high school level because oftentimes, these are programs at the middle school and elementary level, whereas it's one-off classes at the high school level. It's a little bit different in how we then support that with, you know, different resources and different pieces. But I just wanted you guys to understand and, and help everybody understand that this is an ongoing process. These guys have done a great job. The ladies that started it before them had a, had a great start for them as well. Emery led the group at the middle school level and involved all of the elementary, or all of the middle school teachers as well. So I certainly hope that you understand that this is something we took very seriously and we worked a lot on and a lot of people put a lot of hours into because we feel like this is the basis for all the things we do at, at Portage Township Schools. If our kids can read, they can do a lot of things. So certainly hope that you appreciate their work and I certainly do and all of these people that put it into play. It's been a huge process, but I think one that we can all be proud of.
I think, just to share how you mentioned President Haletta, the process, this is the second time this process has been used. We use this, is it reveal math? Reveal, right? We use this process for our math adoption a few years back. Previously, exactly what you said, we would, we would put a committee together, those committee members would kind of rate their different choices based on, you know, whatever presentation. This was the first time Dr. Stevens brought in the concept of piloting, which means we got to be a little vulnerable because that takes some of that ability to have some control within how things are all presented and all material across the district. But we felt like it was definitely still something that was impactful for making the right decision, knowing that we were, as Dr. Stevens said, making an investment for the next six years. So the piloting part was new, but the actual process started with our reveal math specifically at elementary and we have found still positives. I'm not saying that there aren't struggles or growing pains in that adoption, but I think that the amount of teacher input and ability to gain in the professional development prior to the actual adoption proves that this, although extensive process, is what's going to work for us. People feel very, very much a part of making that decision.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Were parents involved in this in some form or fashion?
Well, we have a number on the committee in addition to John, but, but that was really the involvement. And all hundred, every, I mean, many of the 125 teachers that were involved in the feedback also have kids that are going to Portage. So we tried to involve that large stakeholder of people who were specifically ineligible, but they were looking in from all eyes, including that my assistant parent.
Good, thank you. What about the online component? Is that fluid or is it, would it be the same for the next six years?
That's a great question. I would imagine that it's fluid because they already made changes to it and good changes, not like, hey, we changed, now you have to relearn it type thing. Actually, kind of based on some of the feedback that they were getting from the pilot teachers, they said, hey, we really, is there, is there an option, like in the writing portion of this, you see a certain type of feedback? And they said, well, we communicated that to the company and it'll be coming next week. And then, oh, behold, there it was, there in the system. So, you know, one teacher at one of our schools mentioned something like that. It's a resource that's there for anyone across the state who's using that program as well.
And probably the most exciting thing about the online component is it is so user-friendly and to it. When you sit down, you don't have to figure it out, you stand it right there.
I also liked that with the middle school adoption, one of the concerns they had was for some of the stories that the students really were engaged in and had a really strong connection with for various reasons. Some of those stories changed in this new version of the digital, but they still have access to the previous stories to, to utilize. So even as they're updating, if there are features that the teachers liked from before, now of course, that would only really right now apply to our middle school teachers who may have really had kids favor certain stories or be able to do certain activities with those, then they still have access to the old version of stories as well so that they can put those into place as well. So I really liked that as well, that they, they were willing to do.
I like the part where the assessments can be modified. And so that would lead to also response to intervention, right? Instruction, response to instruction now. So I really like that component.
The assessments was a huge piece for us. It's been a concern and so that was one of the areas that we really looked at deeply. There was belief, not only were the assessments, assessments appropriate, fair and at a high level, but also you do have that ability to decide as a curriculum team, hey, we should modify this question. This is a bad question. It doesn't really fit. And so having that's one of the strengths.
Great, thank you.
Along with technology, they all blend right in with our new live panels and that's something that we found very helpful as well. Presentation process works, it works out very well with our new live panel.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you for being here. Thank you all for being here and your, your work. I mean, it's been certainly appreciated and we, we thank you and we look forward to seeing, seeing the results as, as it goes forward.
Thank you.
You know, now as always, we say, you don't have to stay. I know it's St. Patty's Day and you might have some corned beef and cabbage waiting for you somewhere, so don't feel bad if you, if you, if you need to go. We'd love to keep you here, but, but if you've got other things, you certainly won't hurt our feelings. Okay, next we'll move on. Adjustments to the agenda from the board. Does anybody have any adjustments this evening? There are none. We'll go on to the superintendent's consent agenda, which has got our personnel report, our donation report, claims report, and facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion or questions?
Just like to add that donations, we received $7,422.13.
A big one from Cleveland Cliffs.
I saw that, yes. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes? Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda, which has got the minutes of our February 14th, 2025 meeting, and the minutes of our February 24th, 2025 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the board consent agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion, Dan, a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing non, call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes? Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
All right, now we'll move on to board reports. Does anyone have a report, committee report from, for the board?
Hi, Nick.
Yep, go ahead, please.
Just a legislative update on a few bills that we're watching. House Bill 1498, School Accountability. This bill requires the State Board of Education to establish a new accountability model by the end of the year that is based on data in the GPS dashboard, included proficiency grades from I read three and I learn, and prioritize the attainment of diploma seals, among other factors. It specifies that the State Board must assign null or no letter grades for the 24-25 school year, but thereafter use letter grades to designate school performance under as measured in the new model. ISBA and several other education organizations testified in support of this bill. The Senate Education and Career Development Committee helped build for a vote at a later date. Senate Bill 1, Property Tax Relief. This bill was heard in Ways and Means Committee. This bill has significant impact on the levy dollars available to local units of government, including school corporations. More than five hours of testimony occurred on this bill. There was a large opposition to this bill by the people who testified. Concerns were expressed that the bill goes too far in reducing property tax levy dollars for local government. That will result in diminished public services and diminished quality of life services factors in our communities. ISBA testified in opposition of this bill, ensuring the operations fund for school corporations is already revenue-constrained and is the cause for greater reliance on the debt service fund for facility management. In addition, the ISBA testified that this situation is prompting more transfer of funds from the education fund to the operations fund to cover primary costs of transportation, utilities, insurance, technology, and more. The bill was held for a vote and potential amendments in upcoming days of session. And then the last one, Senate Bill 518, School Property Taxes. This bill was heard in the Ways and Means Committee. There was approximately four hours of testimony heard on this bill. The ISBA opposed this bill and shared that during their testimony, the bill was heard for a vote, and ISBA has been informed this bill may be amended into Senate Bill 1. As a reminder, in addition to referendum revenue sharing with charter schools, this bill with distributions beginning in 2028, that all school corporations begin sharing revenue from the operations fund levy with certain charter schools. It also provide, provides phasing in of sharing of revenue with certain charter schools from the school corporation's operations fund levy. It excludes school corporations, meaning specified criteria, from sharing of property tax revenue received under the bill's provisions. It also provides a calculation for determining the amount of the annual grant from the charter and innovation network school grant program based on the amount of property tax revenue received by a charter school from school corporations.
Great, thank you. We appreciate you keeping us informed. I mean, there's a lot of activity, and, you know, it just seems like every year, every session, there's a bigger assault on public schools. And we need to be aware of all those things. And just boy, from one day to the next, things get added and changed. And you look at them, and you go, what are they thinking? And so thank you for keeping our board. I know I've sent more letters to state legislators this session than I ever have in all my years on the board. And hopefully, others are doing the same, and our community, and certainly our, our teachers and staff, that we've got to defend ourselves. It's kind of a shame, you know, there's a lot more important things we all could be doing, and certainly all of you could be doing in, in your classrooms, than having to fight against our state government. But we'll keep up the fight, and hopefully, we'll get some, some relief on some of it. Thank you. Any other board reports?
I have a report from the Redevelopment Commission, the RDC. We met on last Thursday, the 27th. Included on the agenda were general business items, such as, you know, payment of claims, minutes, et cetera. The finalization of the volunteer remediation program by AmeriKol was discussed for Starbucks, which would be located on, at 6071 Central Avenue. Also discussed was the interim loan request for police vehicles. It was explained, as well as several service agreements, such as fire and security wiring, and service paving, landscaping, and some needed work done on the baseball field. There was a preliminary discussion regarding the Economic Development Area Plan, which is going to happen on Route 6 and Airport Road. That was presented. This project will be included on the meeting agenda, which will be held this Thursday, March 20th, at 4:30 at City Hall. After that regular meeting, we will be having a work session to address tax abatements on Thursday. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know the RDC keeps you busy. There's a lot on, on their agenda, but it's all good stuff.
Great stuff.
It's all really good stuff for the city.
Actually, I think our mayor made an announcement about what's possibly going.
It may be a little preemptive, but he did.
He did. So, yeah. If you're interested after the meeting, I can tell you.
Or pick up the Times, because it already hit the newspaper.
Or attend, attend our meeting, or watch it.
But it's exciting. It's exciting. It's just, and it's one of many announcements that'll probably come this year.
Yes.
That like, so it's kind of really cool. Okay, any other board reports? If not, we'll move on to our old business. And we've got the approval to award the fuel bids. Dr. Alanis?
If you recall, we did post those bids, the bid information and the times and the post, February 6th and 13th, with a bid opening on February 24th at 2:00 p.m. According to the bid tabulation, Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in combined estimated consumption of unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel. It's the recommendation to award the no-lead gasoline and diesel fuel to Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the contract period of April 1st, 2025, to March 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the award of the no-lead gasoline and diesel fuel to Al Warren Oil Company as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for a contract period of April 1st, 2025, through March 31st, 2026?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any questions, discussion?
I just have a comment. I did not know that this company was founded in 1948 in Chicago, and so they are celebrating 75 years. And from what I understand, it's a very reputable company.
Okay, thank you. Call roll, please.
Trustee Milata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes? Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Okay, another committee of this board, who I know works really hard, we bringing up our second reading and approval of the NEOLA policies.
So the policies, as you know, were reviewed by our policy committee. They did come before the board for the first reading, and this will serve as the second reading, and hopefully be approval to adopt at the request of the committee. These include things from notice of meetings, conflict of interest due to staff relations, employment of superintendent weapons, class size, student assessment, conflict of interest, again, graduation requirements, promotion, placement, and retention, disposition of surplus property, and various other things.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the NEOLA policies?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing non, call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie, yes? Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milata?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to our new business. We've got the adoption of resolution R03-2025, Determining the Need for the Project. I'll read the resolution. Exhibit A, Resolution Determining Need for Project, Whereas An Investigation Has Been Conducted By The Board Of School Trustees, The Board Of Portage Township Schools, The School Corporation, With Respect To The Renovation Of And Approvance To Facilities Throughout The School Corporation, Including The Construction Of Additions, The Construction Of A Replacement Middle School Building, Which Will Involve The Demolition Of Alesworth Elementary School, Site Improvements, And The Purchase Of Equipment And Technology Collectively, The Project, And Leasing All Or A Portion Of The Project From The Portage Township Multi-School Building Corporation, The Building Corporation. And Whereas This Board Now Finds That A Need Exists For The Project, And That The School Corporation Cannot Provide The Necessary Funds To Pay The Cost Of The Project Required To Meet Such Need, And Whereas It Is Deemed Desirable To Proceed With The Necessary Negotiations And All Other Steps Looking Toward The Financing Of The Project By The Building Corporation And The Lease Of Such Facilities To The School Corporation, Now Therefore Be It Resolved That A Need Exists For The Project, And That The Project Cannot Be Funded From Sufficient Funds Available To The School Corporation, And That This Board Proceed To Take Steps As May Be Necessary To Secure The Project Of Leasing Of Such School Facilities As Provided By The Indiana Code Title 20, Article 47, Chapter 3, Passed And Adopted This 17th Day Of March 2025. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R03-2025?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? And again, this is formalities, correct, Dr. Alanis?
Yes.
As part of that process that we're working toward. Call roll, please.
Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes?
Next, we have the adoption of Resolution R04-2025, Preliminary Plans, Form Of Approval Of Lease Agreement And Authorizing Publication Of Notice Of Lease Hearing. Exhibit B, Resolution Approving Form Of Lease, Whereas The Portage Township Multi-School Building Corporation, The Building Corporation, Has Previously Organized Pursuant To The Indiana Nonprofit Corporation Act of 1991, For The Purpose Of Constructing, Renovating, And Approving Facilities For The Use Of The Portage Township Schools, The School Corporation. Whereas Council For The Building Corporation Has Drafted And Submitted A Proposed Lease Agreement, The Lease, For A Portion Of The Portage High School Building And A Portion Of The Alesworth Elementary School Building, The Lease Premises. And Whereas Preliminary Plans And Estimates Collectively, The Documents, For The Completion Of The Renovations Upon The Lease Premises And Other School Facilities Owned And Operated By The School Corporation Have Been Prepared. And Whereas The Documents Have Been Submitted To And Now Meet With The Approval Of The Board Of School Trustees, The Board. And Whereas Such Documents Have Been Marked To Indicate The Work Covered By The Proposed Lease. Whereas It Now Appears To This Board That The Preliminary Documents Provide The Necessary Facilities For The Students Of The School Corporation, And That The Proposed Lease With The Building Corporation Provides A, For A Fair And Reasonable Rental. Whereas By Statute, The Building Corporation Is Required To Own The Real Estate To Be Leased To The School Corporation, And The School Corporation Is Required To Have The Value Of The Real Estate Determined By Court-appointed Appraisers. So Now Therefore Be It Resolved That The Terms And Conditions Of The Proposed Form Of Lease And The Documents Are Approved And Agreed To As The Basis For A Hearing As Required By Law, And Such Hearing Should Be Held By This Board Upon The Necessity For The Execution Of Such Lease, And Whether The Lease Rental Provided Therein Is A Fair And Reasonable Rental For The Proposed Buildings Prior To The Final Determination Of Such Questions, So That This Board May Determine Whether To Execute Such Lease As Now Written Or Modified. Be It Further Resolved That The Secretary's Publication Of Notice Of Such Hearing As Required By Law Is Hereby Ratified And Confirmed. Be It Further Resolved That The Council For The School Corporation Or The Superintendent Of The School Corporation Is Authorized And Directed To Select Three Appraisers To Appraise The Lease Premises And To Petition The Porter County Circuit Court To Obtain An Order Approving The Appraisal Pursuant To Indiana Code 20-47-3. Further Any And All Such Action For Such Appraisal To The Date Hereof Is Hereby Ratified And Confirmed. Be It Further Result, Any Officers Of The Board Are Authorized To Execute A Deed And Sell The Real Estate At A Price Not Less Than Fixed By The Court, Passed And Adopted This 17th Day Of March, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve the Resolution R4-2025?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing non, call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes? Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
One more resolution. Resolution R05-2025, Approving The Formation Of The Building Corporation. Whereas The Portage Township Multi-School Building Corporation, The Building Corporation, Has Previously Been Formed As A Non-for-Profit Corporation To Assist In Financing, Renovating, Constructing, And Approving Facilities Within The Portage Township Schools, The School Corporation Now Therefore Be It Resolved By The Board Of School Trustees, The Board Of The School Corporation As Follows. Section 1, Is Hereby Determined To Be Proper And In The Public Interest Of The Citizens Of The School Corporation To Re-approve The Incorporation Of The Building Corporation Known And Designated As The Portage Township Multi-School Building Corporation, For The Purpose Of Financing, Renovating, Constructing, And Equipping Certain School Facilities And Leasing Same To The School Corporation. Section 2, That The Articles Of Incorporation And Bylaws Of The Building Corporation Previously Presented To The Board Are Hereby Re-approved. Section 3, That Providing The Financing, Renovating, Constructing, And Equipping Of Such School Facilities By The Building Corporation And The Leasing Of The Same To This School Corporation Is In The Public Interest Of The Citizens Of The School Corporation. And It Is Proper Public Purpose For Which This Board Agrees To Cooperate With The Building Corporation To Assist It In Fulfilling The Requirements Of All Agencies Of The Federal, State, And Local Governments. Section 4, That The Issuance, Sale, And Delivery Of, By The Building Corporation Of One Or More Series Of Bonds Designated Portage Township Multi-School Building Corporation, Advilium Property Tax First Mortgage Bond Series 2025, Or Other Such Name Or Series Designation As Determined At The Time Of Sale. The Bonds, In The Aggregate Principal Amount Of Approximately $99,850,000, Is Hereby Approved. That Upon, Section 5, That Upon Redemption Of The Retirement Of The Bonds, The School Corporation Will Accept From The Building Corporation Title To Such School Facilities Free And Clear Of Any And All Leans And Incumbrances Therein. Section 6, That The Board Hereby Re-approves The Current Directors Of The Building Corporation. And Section 7, That The Building Corporation May Issue, Sell, And Deliver The Bonds Pursuant To The Applicable Laws Of The State Of Indiana, May encumber Any Real Property Or Equipment Acquired By It For The Purpose Of Financing The Construction And Equipping Of Such School Facilities, And May Enter Into The Contracts For The Sale Of The Bonds And The Construction And Acquisition Of Such School Facilities, Passed And Adopted This Day, 17th Day Of March, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R05-2025?
I make a motion to approve the resolution that R05-2025.
You have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing non, call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Milata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes? Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, next we have our retroactive approval of the Portage High School overnight field trip to IU Natatoria in Indianapolis for the boys' swimming state finals on February 27th to March 1st, to Ball State for the girls' state gymnastics competition on March 14th and 15th. Do we have a motion to approve these retroactive overnight field trips?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Milata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes? Trustee Rainier?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Okay, now, finally, we have the approval to adopt the elementary ELA curriculum.
The recommendation for the elementary ELA adoption is to adopt
The recommendation for the elementary ELA adoption is to adopt, my view, SABIS for six years for the total amount of six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, no, sorry, six hundred and forty-three thousand, forty-five dollars and fifty cents. The adoption includes six years of paid-to-buy annual consumable texts, six years of SABIS now, six years of UU United for literacy grade K, six years of digital building knowledge library, one year Success Maker, foundational kits K through two, big books K and one, language awareness handbooks, sound spelling cards, and videos, and tier one, two, and three materials.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the adoption of the elementary ELA curriculum?
I make a motion to adopt the elementary ELA curriculum.
Second.
With a motion of a second, any discussion? Hearing non-called, Rolfe, please.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramian?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vescas?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes. And next, we have the approval to adopt the middle school ELA curriculum.
The recommendation for the ELA adoption for grades six through eight is also SABIS for a six-year period totaling two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. This adoption includes student workbooks, four classroom sets per grade, fifteen teacher books, five at each grade level for Willow Creek student workbooks, classroom sets for grade levels six, seven, and eight, fourteen teacher books. There are also free novels for grades six through eight included, all teacher materials, student consumable texts, and digital subscription with a new text for each student each year with no additional charge. And the digital license includes a new AI writing tool and the term is plagiarized on check card.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the adoption of the middle school ELA curriculum as read?
I make a motion to adopt a middle school ELA curriculum.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Nicole Rolfe, please.
Trustee Ramian?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vescas?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes.
Congratulations. Okay, not nearly as exciting. We have the approval of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six School Board Meeting Calendar.
I was excited.
So I hope you all had a chance to look at that.
We do have the one meeting for July, one meeting for December, one meeting for March, and one meeting for June based on the calendar and some adjustments we've made over time that have been helpful with those shorter months.
Do you have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six School Board Meeting Schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good, motion of second. Any questions or discussion? Nicole Rolfe, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vescas?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramian?
Yes.
And lastly, we have the approval of the two thousand twenty-five summer school calendar.
So, for Session One, this would be at the high school, June sixth through June eighteenth. The student time is forty hours of instruction and the teacher time is forty-eight hours of paid time. Session Two is July twenty-first through July thirty-first. Forty hours again of instruction time for students and forty-eight hours of paid time for teachers. Elementary summer is grades two and three as identified by IREE3. Second and third grade student times totals fifty-six hours of instruction and grade two and three teacher time is seventy-two hours of instruction. The grade two and three summer school information, this is a focus on reading and the passage of the IREE3 assessment. The summer school will take place for elementary at Aylesworth Elementary School. Week one will be five days and each one after that is Monday through Thursday with no school on June nineteenth in observance of Juneteenth. So there are sixteen total days.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five summer school calendar?
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five summer school calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing non-called, Rolfe, please.
Trustee Vescas?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Ramian?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Alanis?
First, congratulations to the Board on these resolutions. I think it's important to mention that through this tax rate management plan, Portage Township Schools will have their first new school since nineteen seventy-nine. So I think that's a huge accomplishment and shows the fiscal management of this Board. Additionally, I think it's really important to note, as Trustee Wilkie mentioned, that through some of these different legislation bills, that this is a time to be mindful of the various things, those emergency services and things such as our ability to renovate or build a new school when needed or have bus replacement plans or our utilities. Those are the operations funds that we are concerned about over time. And then when you consider also the ability to have these tax rate management plans and these caps and different things of what those local taxes will potentially fund outside of our school district, it's a concern. So, again, I think this is a huge testament to what it means to be fiscally sound in a school district to be able to do something like this without going to the taxpayers for referendos. It's a significant accomplishment, so thank you for that. As you know, we completed the Wiley State interview opportunities with our teachers and are in the process currently with our support staff. Dr. Stevens and I are currently in the middle of visiting each of our schools and departments for huddles. We had one huddle in particular today at Myers after school. We have an additional huddle tomorrow. So, we've been going through our departments and schools and just to make that connection on some current events and also talk about some of this legislation and answering their questions. We also, I'm excited, Dr. Stevens and I are going to be meeting for a three-hour session in April. We're convening our teacher forum to continue our culture work. As you know, we met several times last school year as well as two days over the summer. So, we're reconvening now that we have our panorama data. And I'm really pleased to see the positive responses that our teachers and support staff indicated on those surveys as well. So, I will be sharing that with you in our update this coming week. As Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Peirre mentioned, our culture fair in April, we're excited as that's taking shape. We have our planning meeting with the group across the district, the committee for the district, this week. So, we'll be finalizing some of those details and we'll welcome you to attend. There's going to be artwork and all sorts of things going on with entertainment and opportunities to connect. I want to appreciate the adoption committee and also all the teachers beyond that committee. As the group mentioned, when we're talking about one hundred and twenty-five teachers who engaged in the professional development and opportunities at play as well as the piloting and the feedback and the committee itself, that's a significant number of teachers at that elementary level that really took a lot of time out of their day and personal time to make sure that we were making a good sound decision. So, it's really greatly appreciated. As you know, our winter season with athletics has really set up a lot for our spring to continue on for us with basketball, swim, gymnastics, all different things going on as well in our performing arts. It's really just created a strong momentum for us with Portage Pride. And we're going to get out in the community, Melissa heard it even most recently within the Chamber of Commerce. It's really a great, great time. So, it's exciting to see and we look forward to capitalizing on the continued success of our kids. And then spring break is next week. So, at our huddle today at Myers, we talked about, you know, four more days. And our kids are getting spring fever, I think all of us are as well. But it's great to see the continued efforts in the classrooms and not only academically but building those relationships and positive intentions across the district of every employee. It's inspiring every day, so I'm just grateful.
Thank you. And yeah, congratulations to the Portage High School Athletic Department. What a turnaround they've done in just a matter of years. And we're seeing, you know, the successes, as you said, in gymnastics and in swimming and then certainly the basketball, to see the community to come together as they did for both the sectional and the regional this past weekend, just packing the stands. And what was even better, you know, as I looked at that regional and, you know, Portage were playing Crown Point, and I look at their student section, it's about half-full. And you look at ours and it's overflowing. And so, the students are buying in on that success as well. And, you know, certainly, there's so many things to celebrate success within the schools. You know, athletics sometimes just seems to stand out. But it does bring a community together, brings the schools together. And please pass on our congratulations to Mr. Stills and the Athletic Department and certainly our Music Department and the cheerleaders, the dance team, I mean, all of them make up a great experience for our community to participate in, and it certainly is appreciated. Does anything, anybody have anything else for Dr. Alanis or for the Board? Okay, if not, I don't believe that we can receive any public comment forms.
We did not.
So, with that, our next board meeting is at South Haven Elementary on April the fourteenth at five P.M. I hope everyone has a wonderful St. Patty's Day. And again, thank you for the hospitality here at Crisman. And thank all of you for showing up and taking your time to be here with us tonight. This meeting's adjourned.